I don't know what's on the TVs that you can get us on there. So that's what matters.
Yeah, we just looked through two different rounds.
Yeah, so let's go down to Kyoto.
As though it matters.
Everybody turn their phone because I don't know why.
Kyoto is a pretty good sized cemetery. And I would say it was driven over.
Scott, you've got a.
And in its condition, it's like five.
Where my head's at right now, folks.
My daughter just got that for her.
This band playing in the living, on the hallway?
Like that's not the cemetery?
They are.
I believe so.
Yeah, I know they always do.
I mean, I'm so just changed.
A couple of weeks ago that they were.
I don't have a band number. Oh, well then don't listen to me.
I think Catherine told me that Mike was said that they were gonna, at least someone's marching. Beginning at nine.
Okay.
Yes.
And they don't always, there was a year where there was some questionable recordings.
Oh, well, that's news to me.
There was one to the brain that we went down to the middle school theater.
Are you ready, Lee?
Yeah, go ahead. Craig can hear us and we can hear him.
Okay. Without intending to be honest, we're good. I've got six thirty, so I'll just call this meeting an emergency council order. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
I will move to approve the agenda.
Second that. Thank you, guys. Move the second to inform with the posted agenda. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Open communications party in the meeting, is there anybody here to speak to any part of the agenda topics or anything that's not on the agenda? Here and done, we will go to the consent agenda. We've got two items with minutes and cigarette license. Anything is to be pulled off or can we move forward with that?
I would move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
He's got, is there a second?
Okay.
Or I can for Scott and Mark. Who moved the second to pass, move forward with the consent agenda for approval? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Officially, we need to open the public hearing. Ordinance amendment, chapter ninety-nine point oh-two, rate of Mount Vernon's code. Seward.
Staff would like to request that we table E-one, E-two, F-one, F-two until the next meeting. Unfortunately, it would have only made the paper for the minimum of four days, so we want to make sure that that's up to the public over the weekend to see if anyone comes to the next meetings for that.
I assume we have to, if we are being tabled and we have to do them as individual.
Individually. Motion individually, yes.
Yeah. Right there inside of not getting in trouble with the Freedom of Innovation Act.
Individually.
So that needs to be before.
It's a form, yeah.
Let's start.
Sure, in that case, I will move we table E-one.
Thank you, Scott, is there a second? Second. Scott Craig on E-one, I'll table it. That's a voice vote, right? All.
Yes. Roll call, yeah.
All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. E-two, I'll move to table.
Second.
Thank you, Marcus Scott. Move the second to table E-two. If there's no questions, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F-one, the ordinance.
I will move to table F-one.
Thank you, Scott.
Do we, do we care that we're going on order?
No, no, just as long as you do each one.
I would second that.
Scott, who's second to table F-one on this agenda on this meeting? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. But F-two. I would move to a, to table F-two. Finger mark. Motion on the floor to table F-two. In all the consideration, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider this.
Have you ever tabled that many in a row?
I don't know, but. You could run more meetings.
All in person.
The last one in June for the budget.
As we get to G-two and G-three, I request that we read through every single page of that. We recommend that Craig read that. I'm just reading. Two resolutions for approval, and the first one is basically the transfer of funds to cover the police station overrun. Any questions about that? I think it was pretty self-explanatory. Hundred thirty-six is where the heat ran up to eventually, and the process went through.
And this is just a resolution to authorize. And then we have to actually do, we will do this last at G-six, it's actually a correction.
So one question I did, and I, it's just the last line in the little write-up. Water treatment plant owners will be repaid with franchise fees before any renovation projects are identified. So that's from us, right? I know there's these steps on the table from the state for the wastewater and everything, but.
Correct.
So it's before we go on, so we're just gonna throw money over.
Exactly, yes. Correct.
Unless there are further concerns or questions, I would move approval of resolution five dash twenty dash twenty twenty-four A, the kind of the cost overruns and the movement of funds for the police station.
Scott, and Stephanie. Move the second to move forward with resolution five dash twenty dash twenty twenty-four A, temporary transfer of surplus funds municipal water to police station project. And I think the order to vote, and that is a roll call vote.
West, yes. Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Andreessen?
Yes.
And that resolution passes. Moving on to the next one, this is the authorization for funding and so on.
Yeah, so these are just the last two steps to receive the bond proceeds in the amount of four million, or four million eight hundred thousand. And it's basically just establishing a person handling the money moving forward.
Continuation, probably step three in the process here.
Yes, so G-two and G-three, yes.
Any questions about this resolution for staff? Otherwise, can you move forward with the motion? I would move to approve resolution five dash twenty dash twenty twenty-four B, putting in B bank at a west of one to serve as the vague agent. Thank you, Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Mark. Move the second to move forward with resolution five twenty twenty twenty-four B. And bring the call roll, Marsha.
Andreessen?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West, yes. Engel?
Yes. That resolution passes. Moving on to G-three, five twenty twenty twenty-four C. Continuation of this process, any questions? True, Lori, we'd be glad to answer them.
I would love to.
Well, it's our, I would move to approve resolution number five dash twenty dash twenty twenty-four C, approving an authorization of formal agreement and authorization providing the issue of course, twenty-four eight.
The mark, is there a second?
I'll second.
Move the second to move forward with resolution five twenty twenty twenty-four C, as a roll call vote, so it's up to you, Marsha.
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West? Yes. Andreessen?
Yes.
That motion passes. G-four, approve inclusion of Jewish American History Month as a recognized commemorative flag within the city of Mont Vernon's play of flags policy. The resolution is part of our agenda, this is not an item for discussion. Where do we want to go from here?
So, just a little background, a citizen approached staff about the inclusion of the Jewish American flag and the ceremonial flags. Staff sent an email to council. Just a little background for the administrative, for the city administrator, the city does not take a stance on individual flags. So councilperson Andreessen agreed places on the agenda, and we had a discussion about it. So I guess if you want to open that discussion and talk about it.
That is where we're at here. Is anybody here to talk to the public about, for the public to talk about that one?
All right, this is one, I think, that Jewish American Heritage Month is May. It's a very good time right now to make sure that we're supporting and welcoming, you know, our Jewish friends and neighbors. I think that's kind of the whole reasoning, you know, behind, from my understanding, the whole flag policy last year. And I think that's a group that's on the receiving end of a lot of hatred and misunderstanding as well. And I believe that our town is a very supportive town, and I believe that we support our Jewish American friends. And I think this is a good step to move forward and show that, as we do with so many others.
So, Paul, I completely agree with you from a personal standpoint. Or Paul, sorry.
Don't hurt that in Paul's.
It's your voice, though. It's okay. Thank you. My question is this, when I went back through the flags, I felt that none of the others had any religious-based background. Am I wrong in that?
I think they, I think many of them do. Certainly Arab-American, or, excuse me, Lori, you have the list there.
Yeah, I just, I kind of just feel like we're being insistent, so.
I think that the hard part with that is, Stephanie, is whether or not Judaism is a religion, or is it?
A heritage.
Or, or a race.
Yes.
It is both, actually, and I can't explain it, I just remember it sitting in a poli sci class and a professor telling me that.
And.
And I don't, I can't back that same up, I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah.
Because I do view it as, because there are a lot of people who are of Jewish heritage and who, you know, are Jewish, they do not practice the Jewish religion. And throughout time, they have been treated and treated differently because of their Jewish heritage.
Given that, I, I understand, and I would certainly support it. I just wanted to make sure that I asked that question.
And I ask myself that a number of times, too, because I don't want to just put, we're not here to just put the flag as real or anything. Judaism isn't tied to a single country.
Right.
So that's kind of where my stance is on that, and my thinking is.
And my biggest concern is just, you know, consistency.
Is there a flag that's not nationality-based but support-based for Jewish cause?
No, I mean, it's, we would have to figure out what that flag looks like. It's similar to like the Arab-American flag or American-Arab flag for the Asian Pacific. There's not an actual flag for it. There's definitely designs out there that people have come up with, but there's not an official flag that I can find anywhere. Now, something else to consider, just from like a logistics standpoint, is this is the month of May, so we already have two flags on that flag pool. But we, I don't know that we could put a third on there, I don't know that it would fit. So that's where we really need to start looking at, as if you choose to add flags, what that's going to look like every month, with the amount that are already on there.
And I'll go back to last July and August, when we were going through the policy and finalized and ratified. There's nothing magical about keeping a flag up for the entire month. It can be up for one day, like Juneteenth, for one day. It could be up for one week, it could be up for two weeks. And so if there happened to be more than one observance in the month of May, you could do ten days, ten days, ten days. And if somebody were to question it, say, yeah, May first through tenth, we had Arab heritage, May eleventh through twentieth, we had Jewish American heritage, May twenty-first through the end of the month, we had mental health awareness. So I don't think, we have that leeway, at least as I recall from last summer.
I believe that's true. But I do want to recognize that does make more work for us, the employees, to put them up and down, and I do appreciate your willingness to do that, you guys.
Well, and something else I want to point out also, as it sits right now with the shorter poll, in order to keep everybody, everything in order, I guess, if we have to lower those flags at half mast, if we have three flags on there, we're definitely, it's going to be, it's borderline right now with two flags.
Yeah. I could touch it with my hands.
For people that have.
Yeah.
And with, I don't know, all the controversy we had with this whole thing, I don't want somebody coming up and trying to rip them off.
Yeah, I don't think we were to move forward with this or any other tripling up of any month, I think we would need to explore options like Craig just outlined, right? I mean, I don't think we would want, to your point, Ellen, I don't know that we want to go.
I think that we would want the council to tell us what that's on.
Yeah, yeah, we would need that.
What day you want to see that, just certain guidance on that.
And that's one of those things that I think we're going to need to, every six months, every quarter, every year, just, okay, here's what, you know, end of December, here's what the first six months, let's outline those, so we don't, so we have clear direction for staff. Okay, I, my hesitation is, and I don't know how to say this, because I don't know enough about the geopolitics of what we're looking at today, but approving the flying of the Jewish American Heritage Month flag right now may send messages that, that I don't know that we necessarily, I don't know that we don't. And I'm not necessarily saying that we shouldn't because of that, I just, it's something that, that I'm wrestling with internally.
I wonder if we don't propose, you know, some time period where, you know, a predetermined time where we reevaluate the calendar?
Well, I was even going to bring up, like, in this first year, it's like, it's our first year with this council. Then maybe you revisit that a little later, I mean, just as a, try to get through this first year with this and see kind of where you are with it.
Well, and something else, like I mentioned earlier, the controversy of doing the whole flag thing and all the other, it's all about interpretation, I think. I don't have, I'm not either way on this whole thing, doesn't, I don't care with any of it. But it's everybody else, you know? How do they interpret that? And you're always going to have somebody out there, somebody's going to view that as, yeah, with everything going on in Israel right now and that sort of thing. There's going to be somebody out there that does that, so, I mean, I don't know, that's a question at times, how do you not care about everything? But I think to that end, it would never be a good time for any of these flags. Yeah, right? Because there's always conflict or controversy or different opinions. And as I was prepared for this meeting and went back to my notes from last July and August, my understanding, where I was sitting, was that we were looking at these commemorative flags in order to help make Mount Vernon culturally a welcoming place for all who visit, or as many as possible who visit, and this was a symbolic way to do that.
Visit and live here.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. A hundred percent, actually. There's never, there's never been a good time to, very politically convenient time to show support for a lot of these causes.
I would, I would propose to table this, and that for a later meeting, where we evaluate our flag policy for the entire year, and which flags will fly for how long, when, and any additions or deletions.
I will second that motion.
Table, so you know, probably other comments in the next seven months and this year about other events and so on, but what's on the floor right now is table five twenty twenty twenty-four D with the inclusion of this particular flag at this moment, let us get through a year cycle and see where we want to go from there. Are there any questions about that?
I'll be saying, with all due respect, I'll just disagree, because I believe that we had a year, ten years since this came up, if you've been thinking about it, we do have, you know, it seems like we have so many things covered, you know, including Arab-American Heritage Month as well in there, so that seems to be a major glaring group that is being missed currently. And to push it back, to me, seems not the right thing to do, but that's my thought.
And just logistically, I don't know that we'd have to look at the policy, but there isn't any language in it that says we will collect them and act on them in October or, you know what I mean?
And that's what I was getting at.
And so I, I wonder if we're going to paint ourselves into an unfortunate corner by, I mean, I agree, we should sit down and say, okay, what are we doing for this next year at some point, but the inclusion, I don't know that we can, based on the language of the policy, or the resolution that supports the policy as written, be able to table it to an indeterminate date and act as on the whole, you know what I mean? And, and what you said earlier, Craig, about, by that, by my, by that logic, it's never a good time for, for any of these hit home. I would, bluntly, I would be in support of moving forward with the adoption of this flag as one of them that we utilize. So we have a, we have a movement in the second on the table.
Right, to table.
To table.
Right. And with four people voting here, two-two vote, I'm not knowing which way it goes, the motion is to table. If, if it goes two-two, then is it not tabled?
Correct. Correct. Do you remember the tiebreaker?
And there's no action, no. I do not have that interpreted correctly.
Right.
So it's no action, is what basically happens.
So then we need to, in that scenario, then we would need to act on the motion.
If, if the first one's.
First one.
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
First one. Shall I rescind? Ask the mayor, should I rescind my motion? No, no, I believe, I need that.
Except when it's the second.
I think we have a motion second, right?
Yeah.
And I think that, that's on the floor, it's for table, but I want to know before it became even more awkward to follow, to get ahead of that a little bit. So, so we understand totally that the motion on the floor is table, this discussion, do you want to have a timeframe on it, or indefinitely? I mean, we've been carrying the park, sculpture trail funding project. Well, maybe, yeah, and I would, as I sit here, I would say, you know, before the end of the calendar year. So maybe that's what decisions made.
Yes.
Add it, we'll add it, take one time, technical moment, so. Resolution, motion on the floor is to table for at least six months, G-four, and if we are ready to vote, that is a roll call vote, and that becomes, Marsha, who voted.
West. Motion to table, yes.
Motion to table, yes, yes, that's what we're going to. Yes.
Rose?
No.
Andreessen?
No. So, there's no action, the two-two tie, and see where moves from there. Are we on to G-five?
Well, no, now we still have, since it wasn't tabled, now we still have to act on the original resolution.
And we were in discussion, obviously, yeah. What is the rule of the council here? Since we chose not to table it, I would probably pick the rules to vote on.
So, that being the case, I'd move approval of resolution five dash twenty dash twenty twenty-four D.
Oh, that's a motion. Paul, second. Well, Scott and Mark, I move the second to approve resolution five dash twenty dash twenty twenty-four D. That is a again of a roll call vote, and.
Sorry.
If you're ready.
Rose?
Yes.
Andreessen?
Yes.
West? No. Engel?
Yes.
So that resolution passes.
I felt it was going to be smooth when we were skipping all the ones, didn't it?
Hey, you know what? We're scared of the party.
We're not on the woods here yet. I, I've given too much thought to this, and listened to this discussion, and made the points made about it and so on. I have exercised this, I'm going to now, and that is to put a veto on this resolution. And to my understanding, it is a four, three-quarters or four out of five to override the veto. Is that correct?
I believe so. I apologize, I would need to look at that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm like, I believe that's what it is, but I don't.
Okay. So that is what, that is my vote, it's using that power at this point, and this is quite little in the first time, and don't make happen of this, but only for the purposes of the reasons that we have not gone through a cycle yet, that, where do we draw the line, do we need to go through, items that were mentioned earlier by Craig here, but let's get through a year to see what other issues come up. That's where we're at at this point, so.
I think this is the first time that we've landed with three in a month, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. And there were some that had two already.
Yeah.
And what other national issue will be out there, which would be even more prominent?
And am I, maybe I'm blanking on something, is this the first time we've been asked to add one since the original? I know we made decisions about stuff, flags and stuff, but.
We've been asked before, but it has not been officially lawful by councilperson.
That's right, there was not someone to champion that, of course.
Okay, okay.
This is the first one that's had a resolution attached to it.
So, I guess the minute is to reflect that should veto, and if the council's will is to toughen veto or to challenge veto, I guess. So, we should say, will the council to move forward for that, or accept it as it is from now? And it could be, and actually, suggested without a second, but that is for lack of a second, so.
Rescate that, huh?
So what's on the table now is that they actually vetoed.
Yeah.
That's, that's taken my vote. To counter that, if the council, the will of the council is to, to overplay that veto, then is now, I mean, a motion to second and a vote where three out of four need to vote to override the veto.
I understood it.
And we may be getting into, I mean, we're already relatively deep into the city code, but Lori, to your understanding, if, do we need to act on a veto override now? Or if we, three months from now, we've got three more flags, we're like, let's do these as a badge, could we include recognition of Jewish American Heritage Month in that, even though it has been voted or vetoed this evening? And I, I honestly am annoyed.
Scott, I wouldn't know why you wouldn't.
Well, the reason you wouldn't is because you could easily have a council member gum up an entire city by including something on the agenda all the time, all the time, all the time.
Yeah, okay.
You know what I mean? Like, making us vote on the same thing thirty times a year, right?
Right.
And I, I don't know.
So, I think you can just bring it back.
Okay.
That's what I'm thinking tonight, I guess.
Okay.
I think that's what we should do, or you guys should do.
So at this point, closing that item is, the veto's staying in the minutes at this point.
Right. And bring it back when we're meeting.
It can be brought up there. Moving on to the water meter project, best page was the last page of that contract where they think they can install by four.
I know, isn't that simple, amazing?
With only four guys?
Three guys.
Three guys, three people.
And they're saying start in September and end in November, which is amazing.
They're doing forty a week, they're doing.
Yeah, they're going.
Eight a day.
Yeah. So, yeah, this is just the approval of the contract and bonds for Ferguson Water Works. The bid's already been approved. The bid's already been approved. You know, subject to any final reset or revisions from the city attorney. This allows us to sign and move forward. If there is any significant changes, we would obviously bring it back to council.
As a reminder, this was the one that was three hundred and twenty-nine thousand or. Although we're not even budgeting.
Well, it was, yeah, so it's six hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-three thousand, it was about three hundred thousand under what we thought it was going to be.
So move motion to.
I will make a motion to.
Take a step, okay?
Approve Resolution five dash twenty dash twenty twenty-four E.
It's our second.
I'll second.
Move the second to move forward, five dash twenty dash twenty twenty-four E. You all ready to vote on that, Marsha?
West.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
And that resolution passes and bring along, get it done. Proving the fiscal year transfers, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, so this is a induction of Resolution G one, just to approve matches.
I would move to approve Resolution five dash twenty dash twenty twenty-four, approving the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four transfers.
Thank you, Craig, is our second?
I'll second.
And closure of bills to the police department.
The final stuff.
For to approve that process, the final fiscal transfers. Marsha, you ready?
Anderson.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
West. Yes. Engel.
Yes.
That resolution passes. No money arrow, no provisions this month, but there will be one, probably two next month. Old business is still tabled, I understand, so.
Parks and Rec has had a chance to review, but now they actually want to go through and actually figure out what they want in that. Yeah, how to prioritize that, so. Okay. We're hoping for a report from that next meeting, but it'll be the next couple of months before they have kind of our list of what they're, what they're looking at.
And one of that, two new universal, probably education, I don't know, just have this first, but this second. Well, for your approval, we've got a claims list.
I will move to approve the claims list.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. This is second. Mark. You have more staff, did I catch you off?
She's down, your second, it falls.
She was gonna go through the advised list here.
Yeah.
All for, all happy.
For the laundry, the PC is working.
That motion on the floor approves claims list. For written vote, that is a voice vote, all pay for that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Moving to, on a proposal, PC audit services, Brad, Brad How, no, the next one's Brad How.
No, this is just.
We put this out the bid like two years ago.
It's a yearly engagement letter that we get from the auditors.
But I think you're right, we did kind of test our, test our.
It's two years ago that we switched to the new company.
We changed a bunch of other services, but we didn't change this one, so this was tested, yeah.
Yeah. That being the case, I would move approval of the auditing services yearly contract for from Old Bell high and company in the amount of fourteen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, great, thank you. Move the second to move forward with the audit services. If there are further questions, all pay for that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, next one's consideration of retaining Brad How again for CPA proposal. Kind of an audit prep, if I will, if you will. Worked well in the past, three weeks of services, what's this, the month, the month two?
Chris is raved about his services in the past, I know.
I recall this, yes.
Audit prep, early summer, usually, in the summer?
So the bid said, oh, move to approve. Discussion consideration of Bradley Hogg CPA proposal, mechanic services.
I'll second. Craig on that. So move the second to move forward with the Bradley Hogg proposal. And if there are more questions of staff, ready to vote, all pay for that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Special consideration of invoice one five oh five four nine eight, downtown streetscape project. This is like number three with JEO.
Third invoice, yes. I mean, now it's sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and two dollars. In the next couple of weeks, we should have a master plan draft, so we get excited for that, see if they come up with for us. They're a great group, they've been a really good team.
What's the next meeting with that group, is there, is there one coming up soon?
We'll have one at the beginning of June.
June fourth, is the advisory committee meeting.
Correct, yep. We didn't do the month of May, just because we just had.
How does the business owner engagement been?
It's been okay.
So the opportunity has been there.
It's been there, and I, to be honest, I've been a little disappointed in.
No, there's been, there's a small number of them actually on the advisory committee that are pretty active.
For the most part, yes.
Outside of that.
Yeah, I mean, I've gone door to door and handed out flyers, and I mean, I send emails and communications, there's a lot of stuff and. You know, a lot of times it's how the works, it's like a public info meeting, people don't attend until it's back then, until they see it in their backyard.
Lori, remind me approximately how many businesses are in the three block area?
So. So there's, where should I get four on my list? I want to say there's like seventy of them.
Yeah, that's what I have, two groups. Yeah, especially because of the Elliot's building and so on.
Yeah, I was really surprised.
And so when I was here and several others were here for the, the meeting where we went to the different stations.
Yeah.
How many businesses were here for that? I mean, off the top of my head, I'd say fifteen.
Maybe. I don't even know that it was that many, so unfortunately.
Fifteen would be about twenty percent.
Yeah.
Of that number, so. There was enough to have four stations.
Right. I mean, I wish more people would participate, but you can only put it out there, yeah, people could show up.
It's not for lack of communication.
No.
Done a really good job.
Well, well, JEO was, I get a lot of them JEO. But yeah, I mean, I hope there's more, that more people participate in things, but it's just usually not the case. I mean, coming from the engineering background, when you have public info meetings, no one showed up until it was sitting up there front of you. So it's just the nature of the beast.
Thank you.
What was it, the kind of participation on the, down here on Chalk Walk that either?
Oh, that was terrible. That just, that's.
People coming into City Hall.
Yeah. But it's also in conjunction with another event, and you have to be careful with that, because, I mean, I wasn't sure really what to expect, but I, I was expecting more of a turnout than that, but I wasn't expecting it to be crazy, because it is Chalk Walk, you know, and it's about Chalk Walk, so.
And Doug did say that turnout for the police station visits was pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, so I think he said a hundred and fifty, which is great.
I was glad you did that.
Yeah.
Showed well, all officers were there, reserved.
Yeah, it was, it was a good turnout.
And the donuts and cookies.
Maybe, hey, we had cookies. We had cookies.
Did you advertise that?
I didn't know, well, I didn't know JEO was bringing cookies.
JEO brings, always brings food, thumbs up.
They do, they're good.
Again, the effort is.
Yeah.
They're, they're a really great firm to work with.
So we still have a motion?
Yeah.
I would move to approve invoice fifteen zero five four nine for JEO.
I will second that.
Very good, yes. That motion on the floor to prove the next invoice to JEO. Ready to vote on that, all pay for that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Pool vacuum.
Elvin, how long, how long does that last, a pool vacuum, do you have, do you have any idea?
A lot longer if they take care of it.
Is that Christian? Matt's, a kitty staff.
Kitty staff, I think typically takes care of it. So yeah, source, I'm gonna help out there, but the one that we have is pretty outdated, I think we've had it for quite a while.
Well, you can't even get parts for it now, so that's kind of the issue, is that we really can't fix it, there's no replacement parts.
I don't remember in my.
Even in a park and rec. I don't remember.
Yeah, my six years before I'm a park and rec.
The pool heater was always coming up. The heater's been a issue, yeah. The vacuum, I have not.
I don't ever remember writing a check for a vacuum.
No, I don't either, so it's gotta be.
I'm gonna say at least a decade.
We've put some Band-Aids on it to keep, I know the last couple of years anyway, but yeah.
Yeah.
And this is something that no matter what happens going forward, we still have a vacuum community.
Exactly.
And it will be.
So the renovations done, so.
So, given that, I will move to approve the purchase of the pool vacuum.
I will second. Move the second to move forward, the purchase of the pool vacuum to the tune of eleven seven. And that is invoice four, so all pay for that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our reports have been filed. See, Shannon is in Las Vegas, well, he's had, his report for accidents is probably a low month. I've never seen anything like that. Move forward to Public Works. Elvin's cut us a line here.
Well, we have the new employee starting May twenty-eighth, we're excited that Ted Siders is coming on board, so we're excited to have him as an addition.
He losing town?
He's in Lisbon.
That's someone on the report.
What?
So it's local?
But I just wanted to say.
Any relation to that?
No, it's spelled differently.
So it's Sider, oh, it's not a V.
That's probably what I didn't connect to that catch.
And it's S E I T, or it's actually very different on paper, but it sounds like Siders.
Do we have a lacrosse thing going? Does the school do lacrosse now, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Cool, okay.
We have lacrosse.
There's physics in clubs and.
Lacrosse could be added to the whole football field, so.
My understanding, well, I know, I know our staff is painting it and for the rent. For the rental, for the, for the payback, for viewing the field. Or part of that is I charge the city, or the city, the city charges the school for the paint, the paint. So, yeah, I was under the influence that it was a, a school.
Probably is, I just hadn't heard of it, you don't think.
I think it might be Kingfisher lacrosse, so I'm not, right? So it's. It's a club discipline. And if somebody's paying for it, if you set this goal to a school, they'll probably pass it on to Kingfisher, but that's gonna be more, more established and.
Yeah.
Roman Myers of Robert Bank, who is now working for the city, is sold, was who brought it to Mount Vernon and it's, it'd be a big deal.
Well, one of our team, Joel Dennis, his child plays on it.
Yes.
And so, yeah, great, his boy.
Anything else for Public Works, for Elvin?
I like that Janiac. She has done a great job.
She calls herself Janiac.
I thought it did that, maybe that triangle was planted. And I walked the other day, and there were two gals that said that that is now their favorite place to stop and sit.
Oh, yeah, a little, little break right there.
Yeah.
She was, she was.
She is, I get her kind of my house.
I could use Jan in my life.
Yeah, that's crazy.
The fiance of Public Works, Ellen Clarkson Rick. Matt sent us a report, how's he doing for staff, does anybody know, for summer, pool?
Oh, we're fully staffed.
Staffed, okay.
Chalk Walk is phenomenal.
It isn't, but. All the, these were out there at thirty in the morning, I drive a street off, that was pretty impressive. Pool laboratory. Questions for Miss Chamberlain? Moving to discussion, I have a staff retirement plan.
Yeah, so this is something that several staff members have brought up. I don't know a ton about it yet, but it's a four fifty-seven B plan. There's no cost to the city, it really is just an additional retirement option for employees if they want to put money into it. We had a call with Mission Square last week, it was myself, Lee and Chris, and they just kind of gave us a general overview of that plan. I don't know a ton about it, I know, Lee, you can probably speak to it a little bit, because you had to, you're in it with the city as well. But, and you don't have to speak to it, you don't want to. No, I'm sorry, I put you on the spot, but, but.
Lee will have a conversation with you later, Lori.
She has a little bit of experience with that. So no, I don't know if you want to speak to anything, you don't have to, I just.
Employees can opt in if they so choose, and it allows you to make contributions and that those contributions grow and the interest grows tax deferred. And then if you depart from service, you may withdraw at that time, or you can leave the monies in there. And otherwise, and there's, I believe it's six, there's a designated time when you're required to withdraw.
Because unlike hypers, I believe the little, when I saw, look at this, A, this is deferred compensation.
Right.
B, you have to be over fifty years old, I think, which is why Lori doesn't, maybe nobody here, whatever.
I know you have to start pulling from it after seventy-two, but.
And not a lot of people tend to do that, but it's no charge to the city or the town, and so if somebody's interested in referring compensation.
Right. And so there's really, and there's no action to be taken on that, it's more just your blessing that we can move forward to kind of research it, and even if we come up with, we'll bring back to council.
And, and city employees have access hypers, automatically.
Yes, you're automatically.
Some are already.
This is a separate, yes.
This would be in lieu of buying Apple stock with your money.
Basically, yeah.
And then, but will you, then be tax free, what's your thinking about that?
Well, it's something we can offer, you know, it's a good way to build up retention of employees and just, just another.
Do our two unions have an opinion about this? Somebody asked about them.
I mean, the union members that brought it to us, so I, I guess I would say they're in favor of it, I don't know where they're.
Local, did local people bring it to us, or did the reps bring it?
No, this is our, our employees that brought it to us, like our local.
Any else, like, do we have a, like, bring action there, but obviously no action.
No, no action, just longer enough and, yeah. Yeah, we're kind of looking at it. Oh, keep on.
No, you go.
No, I'm going on the report session, yeah.
There's a report, a couple of things I was gonna add was, in our last month or this one, Cityscape from the Cleveland Cities, a website was noted on here in one of your articles about the, it's a lovely thing, so a nice little plug for us here. Having a couple with Tony Plitt on this Friday, he's coming into town, talking during the legislative session a couple times, and he's saying to, he wanted to do it, but when he was out of session, so. Gets up on Friday. Last Thursday, I met with the new sustainability director for the county, Kara Marshman, and had a good conversation with her. Plus she's getting, it was day eight, I think, at her job, so I won't put too much pressure on her, yeah. There was not mentioned in the library report from Grace Chamberlain, but still filling in a gap on archive development, and I don't know if Nathan did it, we kept a loop of that, but citizens identified some gaps in our city archives, papers, basically. This, it was papers in one form, then it was microfiche, and then it's, now it's stored in the cloud. But there's some gaps through some years that trying to identify who's gonna pay for it, by what price and so on, so that that may be complete, because library, Nathan, other people have told me, historic preservationists told me that they get multiple requests for historic information, then, so those archives can get used, but we're still trying to finish again, finish up. And so that's totally complete. And I added my signature to a group called Midwest Building Decarbonization Coalition, and this is, I get requests to see if they want to sign on it, and it's not, not costing anything. It's a very equitable group, when I look at their website, and I'm just added to the list, and that was, actually came from the last sustainability coordinator, Tamara Marcus. So I signed on to that, and that was a personal one. That's, this is what I had, any council reports?
I would just add the short survey for the childcare solutions, number one is Tri-Grass Solutions. And I think I mentioned, a couple of weeks ago, Lori was helping us with a short survey, just to get some final bits of data and information to add to the survey for the League of Women Voters from two years ago, where we had seventy-nine responses, and we felt really good about the responses. We've had two hundred and forty-three responses to the short survey from parents or those that are accountable for children going to daycare, and thirty-three responses from business and managers. And so, really outstanding response. Lori's gonna put a note out, reminding folks if they have, still want to fill out.
Lori's gonna put a note out reminding folks if they have, still want to fill out the survey, they have until June one when it closes. Then we'll take that data and information, go to the childcare solutions team and decide, add it to our longer term plan. And that takes something.
Great, great to see the response.
And it was quick response. Because the first day we had about, I remember it. And that's thanks to Lori, I think, and really deep mom. Because it went to the right people, people that were itching to say a few things, and I think, when there are only three or four questions, it makes it a lot easier to fill out a survey than when you have thirty questions.
For sure, yeah.
Mark, you wanna talk about Platteville and council meeting? Yes.
Yeah, moving to Platteville to check out their street lighting. So that was a really informative trip to see all the different things that they're able to do. You know, they're able to play sounds and music throughout downtown, you know, radar speed detector, I think the options are, you know, we should. Great options, so we'll have a lot to think about with that, and just wish it was a nicer day so we could go out to water. It was a good trip.
Let me tell you, these speakers, it will put you on a miracle in thirty-fourth street vibe, those, they play Christmas music. And I'm just sitting here going, oh my God, that's gonna be so great.
I am telling you right now, about five years ago, I was trying to champion this because I have been a huge believer in it. You can go to Anamosa at Pumping Fest, and it is wonderful.
It's magical, like I'm so excited.
And there was pushback, but I really do believe that, you know, we can figure out a way. Where there's a will, there's a way. And I just want you to know, I'm a huge advocate about what the music and speakers could do, not only for the atmosphere, but also we have to make announcements. There was a situation just at Chalk Walk, when there was a car blocking other people in the bank parking lot. And we had to scramble with a note, run it to some, you know what I mean, you know what I'm saying? So that perspective also, and having that communication on those would be very good.
For that emergencies, I mean, that's part of this too. You know, when we have those emergencies, like we did last year with the weather at Chalk Walk, and it's like, get cleaned up, we gotta go. You know, that's, that's.
I think there was a question about that being used for a PA system, all right?
We weren't sure.
He said that, yes, you could use it for a PA system, he did not know how. He's like, there's, he's like, there's a way to do it, we're just number, I don't, I don't think that they're using it to its fullest capabilities. It's kind of the feeling you got when we were there. I think they use it for what they need it for, but it's got, it's got a lot more that you can do with it. It was, it was a neat trip. Oh, my gosh.
Perhaps that'll partner with this with the Lion too, to put it mildly.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And just then, sorry, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Mark, I, I stole your thunder.
No, no, that was good.
But I was so excited about that, so is there anything else I'd like to say about Lion?
No, but I'm, no, I'm glad you said that because, you know, there will be pushback, but when it comes to something as simple as music playing, I think we can win some people over, you know, simple things like that.
Yeah, it's not like the music's gonna be played twenty-four seven, or we're, we're cranking, you know, hair bands two in the morning.
But that was exactly the trick back then.
Eldon does not get the controls. Oh, my gosh.
Or that baseball field.
Yeah, no kidding.
It was just set up as a, it's just a software program, so yeah, you can just jump on there and you can make anything happen, whether it's dim the lights or, or set the settings for those things. So it was, it was, yeah.
I wish I would've been there at night, just to see what it's like at nighttime, you know, the lights on and everything, but.
Well, and a lot of it, it said it was all adaptive and programmed in there even to when exactly sunset would be, and it adjusts that adjusts that automatically to the day, so it's just a really smart program.
And the banners, the.
LED banners.
LED banners were pretty neat. Yeah, that's cool.
Things to come. Things to come, yeah. One other thing, Chris had just gotten this today, that each one of me and Mike mentioned, the Lion rate increases that are set for probably October twenty twenty-four. Looks like it's gonna be eleven point one percent in October twenty twenty-four and then eight point nine percent in October twenty twenty-five. So it depends on.
And that's a Lion residential, everybody?
Yep, just coming down the pipe.
Can't hear each other, Lori?
That's. That's the thing, is it's I utility board, board to determine if and when these changes occur.
The Lion makes water and sewage look like nothing.
So just, that's it.
My water and sewage.
I don't want to end on that, but.
My own liens gonna go up four hundred.
I know, it's, that's fine.
But they're partnering with this lighting project. Those are the answers for the damn lights.
You gotta pay for the Christmas music somehow.
Anything else, Chris, want to add to his report?
No.
Is there anything else that needs to come before this council meeting, otherwise we are adjourned. Thank you for your light.